To order, it is December 17th and this is a special meeting of the Board of Directors for the San Diego Community Power and is just after 4:00 PM. So I'm going to call this meeting to order and we will do a roll call. Roll call. Sebastian, did you want to do that? Or I can just acknowledge for the record that it sounds like every one of our board members are here. That is that sufficient?
Yeah, I would say so, but I would defer to Ryan.
Why don't we just do a roll call?
Please.
Okay. Let's see. Welcome aboard Director DeDina.
DeDina President.
Director Montgomery Stapp.
Here.
Director Bieber.
Here.
Vice Chair Padilla.
President.
Chair Mosca.
Here.
We have a full house.
All right. Well, we have, do you have any public comments on the closed session items?
Let me double check real quick. No public comments for today.
All right. We have two items on our closed session agenda. Conference with legal counsel exist in litigation pursuant to government code. Section 54956.9 D1 and the name is SDGNE era forecast proceeding. That's the first item. Second item is conference with legal counsel, anticipation of litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to government code. Section 54956.9 D4, one potential case, and those are the two items that we have on our agenda. So we're gonna, we're going to move now to closed session and you all received a link for that closed session. And then we'll return after a closed session is done for public session items. All right.
Sebastian, did the link I went into this one, was it in the same email or was it a separate email, the closed session link?
The closed session link is part of the calendar invite, but I can go ahead and just email you that, that link separately.
Thank you.
It should be in the same, in your calendar invite. It should be that there's a top one for the public facing and then there's a second one.
That's what I thought. Okay, let me try, let me try that, Sebastian. And if you don't see me, send me something new. Okay?
Well, see you guys in, see you guys in close.
Okay.
Do you have the link, Ty?
What's that?
Do you have the link?
I don't think so. I don't think I have. Let me, let me look. Sorry. I thought this was the link.
I'm sorry. I'm confused. Are we supposed to sign into another link now?
Yes, Sebastian. I don't think I have that one either.
Okay, I will send that to you three right now.
Thank you.
All right. Well, Sebastian's here, so I must be in the right place.
Um.
We're in the wrong place, actually. All, all three of us here.
Obviously, I don't know the secret handshake. So.
I don't either, I guess.
So what do we do, Sebastian?
I'm sending you the, the link right now. Give me one second.
An email link? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, it'll be in an email.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sure you need more advice about running these meetings, Sebastian, but I know there's a way to like organize a separate room in Zoom.
Might have to do that.
Just a suggestion for the future, keep the links to them in a month.
Yeah. Okay, hold on. Having some issues here. Okay. Loading this now.
I think I actually found it, Sebastian. So drop off and go to it. Thanks.
Okay. And I just forwarded that link to you. Director DeDina.
Okay. There we go. All right.
Should be the one from, from Nicholas Norvell.
Yeah, I got it.
Hello Director Paper.
Hello.
Megan and Sebastian, are we ready to go?
I don't know if we're waiting on.
It looks like we have. We have a paper, we have.
Yeah, I think we're missing three.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Can you let me know when we have everybody back?
Yes.
Megan, do we have public comment today?
We do, we have it on general public comment, item five, item 10, and item nine. And we have one person that's going to be speaking from their computer.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe we are waiting on Director DeDina.
There we go.
All right, are we, are we good to go?
It looks like it.
All right, let's, let's, let's go. I'm going to call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Directors of San Diego Community Power. It's December 17th, and it is 5:10. Let's, let's have a, let's have a, I think, so are we going to do, did you guys want to do the oath of office first? Have you, how you have an agenda, is that what you wanted to do?
Pardon me, Mr. Chair, can we report out from closed session?
Yes, General Counsel, can we report out from the closed session?
I apologize, thank you, there's nothing to report, thank you.
All right, perfect. Staff, did you want to swear in our newest board member?
Yes, yes Chair, if Megan will facilitate the oath, and we're going to try to take a picture.
I don't know what my video looks like, I'm going to try and stand. I can't see myself, so.
You see you.
Okay. Director DeDina, if you want to go ahead and stand and raise your right hand, we'll go ahead and move forward. And you'll repeat after me, I.
I.
State your name.
Serge DeDina.
Do you solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Hello Director Paper.
Megan and Sebastian, are we ready to go?
Um, I don't know if we're waiting on.
It looks like we have. We have Baber, we have. Oh, we are.
Yeah, I think we're missing three.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Can you let me know when we have? Everybody back?
Yes.
Megan, do we have public comment today?
We do. We have it on general public comment, item five, item 10, and item nine. And we have one person that's going to be speaking from their computer.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe we are waiting on Director DeDina.
There we go.
There we go.
All right, are we, are we good to go?
It looks like it.
All right, let's, let's, let's go. I'm going to call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Directors of San Diego Community Power. It's December 17th, and it is 5:10. Let's, let's have a. Let's have a. I think, so are we going to do, did you guys want to do the oath of office first? Have you, how you have an agenda? Is that what you wanted to do?
Pardon me, Mr. Chair, can we report out from closed session?
Yes, General Counsel, can we report out from the closed session?
I apologize. Thank you. There's nothing to report. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Staff, did you want to swear in our newest board member?
Uh, yes. Uh, yes, Chair. If Megan will facilitate the oath. And. We're gonna try to take a picture.
I don't know what my video looks like. I'm gonna try and stand. I can't see myself, so.
You see you.
Okay. Um. Director DeDina, if you want to go ahead and stand and raise your right hand, we'll go ahead and move forward. And you'll repeat after me. I.
I.
State your name.
Serge DeDina.
Do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
Say truth. I'm sorry, repeat that, please. Like, it's hard to hear him.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
Truth. Repeat that. I'm sorry, it's not coming through.
Okay, let me try it without my.
Sorry.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or, I'm sorry, repeat that?
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Welcome, Board Member DeDina. We're so, so excited to have you. Mayor DeDina is the mayor of Imperial Beach, as many of you already know. And he is our newest board member, and I'm really looking forward to his service and helping us out on this task. So, welcome.
Thank you. It's great to be here.
All right, so let's, let's, we already called to order, so let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag. The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
The Republic.
For which it stands.
Stands.
One nation.
A nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, let's do a roll call.
Board Member DeDina.
DeDina here.
Board Member Montgomery.
Here.
Board Member Baber.
Here.
Vice Chair Padilla.
Here.
Chair Mosca.
Here. All right, and then we're gonna, so items to be added, withdrawn, or reordered on the agenda. I think we're gonna move item number nine. Staff has requested that we move number nine to, is it the next agenda or to a future agenda?
Uh, if I may, Chair, that would be item 10 to a future agenda.
All right, to a future agenda. All right, so we'll move 10 to a future agenda item. All right, so let's, let's then move on to, to. If there are no other changes to the posted agenda, we'll move on to public comment. All right, so we have one, one person that wants to comment on items that are not on our agenda. Megan, do you want to queue that up?
Yes, one second. So, the, or the public comment is from Matthew Vascalakis. Good afternoon, Board Chair, Directors, and Staff. On behalf of Climate Action Campaign, we would like to express our sincere appreciation for your tireless work to launch San Diego Community Power in the face of such transcendent bad faith behavior from SDGNE. Know that the community stands with you in building public power and the mission you have all committed to carry out. We also want to welcome Mayor Serge DeDina to the board. His wealth of experience and knowledge will be critical as SDCP launches in the coming months. We look forward to working with you all in the new year. Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
Great. All right, well, let's move on to the consent calendar. We have one through four for the consent calendar. Any questions, comments, or motion on the consent calendar?
Chair, I'm happy to move the consent items.
Thank you. We have a motion by Montgomery staff. Second by Vice Chair Padilla.
Board Member DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, I.
Board Member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
I.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
And now we move to the most important item of the night, and that's approval of a resolution recognizing former Board Member Mark West as a founding board member of San Diego, San Diego Community Power. I'll turn this over to Cody or Bill.
Is he here? I don't have the resolution in front of me. Do you have it, Sebastian, or Cody? One of you two of you have it.
Do we want to read?
Mark does.
Well, Mark had.
To read his own resolution, can somebody?
Well, we, that's by, by design. We, I think Cody took it out to him, or Sebastian took it out to him today, so he would have it in his hand.
All right, well.
The signatures, has wet signatures on it and everything, so it's official. But certainly, now we remember, the effort is well worth it, and we're gonna miss him, and. I haven't been here very long, but he's been a help to me and very dedicated and a fine representative for, for Imperial Beach, and I don't know if any of the other. If you want us to read the reso, we can do that, but it's. This one is from the board. I will tell you at the. At hit, a function that his folks held, we actually presented a letter from the staff, you know, commending him for his service and his, his willingness to help us and, and, you know, so that he has both a letter from us and a resolution from you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Mark, for, for being with us on this task. I love seeing your, your smiling face. You know, you've, you've been with us from the beginning and, you know, stepped in into my shoes several times to help out, served on our Risk and Finance Committee. You know, not only have I always enjoyed your advice and, and your input and feedback, but I think you've done a great job in serving this organization and helping us get off the ground. Because of your service, we're definitely that much stronger and, and really, you know, ready to, to reach our goals. And so, thank you for, for, for working with us and being a part of our organization and our board and one of our, one of our, our founding members. Thank you. I really appreciate it. And any other board members that want to. Say anything about Mark, you're, you're welcome to do that.
Don't say anything about Mark. We could be.
Say anything.
It could, it could go south very quickly.
We love you, Mark. We're grateful. Your legacy lives on, and I'm suspicious we haven't heard the last from you, so.
You, you can guarantee that there, Vice Chair Padilla, there is, there's no doubt about that.
Um, Mark, I, they'll be, these are big, big, giant shoes to fill, and I know you'll be watching every step of the way to see how I fill them, but, uh, anyway, we do appreciate your service. We really appreciate it. I know I do, and I will attempt to fulfill your shoes every time I'm involved here. Thank you.
You know, Mark is kind of our tech savvy guy, too. The guy that would be asking about the Tesla batteries, the, all of the, all the swanky kind of newest technology out. He's the guy that, like, is just completely attracted to it, knows it, and is able to kind of just really, you know, dig deep on it, and so that's, uh, well, we'll have to have somebody that fills those shoes.
Joe, I'm, I'm a tech geek at heart. I just want you to know that I, I love this stuff. So, I know you guys are in great shape. I mean, I really do.
Mark, it's been a pleasure to work with you.
Oh, Ty, no doubt, brother. We just haven't, the only thing we missed out on is we still, we still have yet to paddle together, my friend.
Uh, we'll get a surfette. Don't worry about it.
My time is much more free now.
Mark, just want to say real quick, I will miss you. It was a pleasure to serve with you on the board. It's how we kind of got to know each other. So, I hope that we'll be in touch, and I will miss you and appreciate your service.
Oh, Monica, well, you, you can guarantee that we will continue this, and. I look forward to many things together, to tell you the truth, and I want to continue this relationship, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Monica.
Mark, it's Bill. You're my hero, man. I'm gonna totally miss you. Sending Serge is not, is not bad, but he's no Mark. You know, he's just no Mark, but feel free to follow us, Mark, and call me when you think we're screwing up, okay?
Yeah, no, no doubt. I will, I have, I have all of you guys on speed dial, so I guarantee that I will call and, and.
Please do.
I'll be watching you guys, and Lord knows, I, I am watching everything when, as you guys are moving forward, and I appreciate the hard work you're doing, especially with the, the challenges we're seeing with, with SDGNE and CPUC. I mean, I know that the, the, the world is trying to keep the guys down, and you're, you five board members are going to be the people to lead this group and lead this city and our county and our region to a brighter future, and it is led by your leadership of the board, but the staff, I just want you to know, Bill, Seabass, Cody, all you guys are, are so what this community needs, and I, I think that it couldn't be in better, better hands, but I am going to be involved and will continue to be involved, because this is, deep down inside me, energy is something that fascinates me with, with ultimate passion. So, I appreciate this. Seabass brought this to me today. And it means a lot to me. It, the county made a, a Mark West day, but this one means more to me than, than anything, so.
Yay.
Love you guys.
Hold that up one more time, so I can take a picture.
Yay.
All right, hold on. All right, one, one more time. Ready? Awesome.
That's a Mark West selfie without Mark holding the camera.
All right, so, and, and this isn't just a certificate of, of recognition. This is a resolution. We don't just do this for anybody.
I know.
Yeah, so I will, I will give the privileges, privilege here of, of moving this adoption of this resolution to the great representative from IB, Serge Dean.
So moved.
Do we have a second on this motion?
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Board Member DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, I.
Board Member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
I.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Um, I'm sorry, Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. We did have one public comment.
Oh, no.
I apologize.
All right.
I'll, I'll just read it right now, if that's okay?
Sure, absolutely.
So, it's from Matthew Vascalakis. On behalf of Climate Action Campaign, we would like to thank Mark West for his leadership at San Diego, San Diego Community Power. Mark has been a champion for everything this organization stands for, and we could not have had a better board director during this critical first year. We look forward to seeing all of the amazing things Mark will, will accomplish in the years ahead, and hope to continue to work with him to build a better San Diego region. Thank you, Mark.
Matthew, thank you so much for saying that. It means a lot to me, Matthew. I appreciate it. Climate Action Campaign, you've been great partners and, uh, continue to work with this board, and I'll be, trust me, I'll be knocking on your door and Nicole's door all the time.
All right. Well, thank you, Mark, and now you can have the, the pleasure of hanging up and, and sitting at home, or you can sit and, and watch us, whatever, whatever you want to do.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. All right, so let's move on to item number six, Operations and Administration Report from the interim Chief Executive Officer, Bill Cornahan.
Okay, thank you. I'll try not to take too much time. It's getting late, but just to report to you that we have hired a printer to do the notices for the customers under Phase One and Two. It's, and I may get, may not get the name correct, but it's Nayanesh printers. They are local firm, and they'll be providing the printing and mailing services for us, and it came after we issued an informal request for proposals and evaluated those proposals, and so we were able to engage a local firm to provide those services for us in the future. Also like to report that the, there was a Community Choice Energy Forum hosted by the Climate Action Committee back in summer four, and I can tell you that SDCP was well represented in the fact that we were on the chair and Board Member Monica Step and I were on a, a panel. I gave a talk, or actually a Q and A at the VIP function at the beginning. Cody and Sebastian both were moderators for, for panels, and the most important thing is Director Baber was recipient of the inaugural Clean Energy Courage Award at the forum and received kudos from, from all around, and so we'd like to also recognize him officially as, as being a great representative for us.
Thank you.
A staffing report. We continue to, to gain momentum as we move forward. You, you met earlier today Kimberly Isley, who's our new executive assistant, and has been on board for a couple of weeks now. I would, I'm, and, and I'm also proud to report that Sebastian has accepted the position, the program, and policy manager, so he will be our second hire, and we're proud that he's able to, you know, stay on board with us. He's a tremendous asset, and I'm glad to have him, that, and have him on the team. We also extended an offer to, for, led the, the Director of Legislative and Regulatory Affairs. It was actually advertised as regulatory, but it really needs to be both. We had a, two panels. We had one to assess technical competence, and then Cody and I did the final one to determine sort of the fit and, and whether they were the right person. And, and today we concluded our panel. She and I went through, it went through the same process, different people course, for the Director of Power Services, and we're, we're talking to one of the candidates about trying to make a deal and, and get them on board as well. Next one up is. Of, of, of a group. We don't know exactly which order we'll take them in, but certainly within the next couple of months, we'll be, we'll be recruiting for a finance manager, sort of a customer representative, but not sort of the kind that talks on the phone, but sort of a, a customer rep that deals with customers real time. And we're talking about rolling out in phases, and we want to have particularly in Phase One and Two, so real one-on-one contact with those prospective customers so that we can be there and answer their questions, and we need to get a couple of folks on board and train them to do that. We're also. Looking to add a person in their resource group, but there is a lot of day-to-day internal actions and reactions with the Cal ISO when we get up and running, and actually, those positions have to be certified by the ISO. We have a consultant on board now who is certified in the event that, that we need to use his services in the interim, but we're going to get someone hired and, and trained so that we're ready to operate on a day-to-day basis. We're also looking at engaging a CFO as well. You know, once, once we start in March and thereafter, we're going to be dealing in hundreds of thousands, if not tens of millions of dollars on a routine basis, and we need a CFO in that position. And then we're also looking at someone for the, the other major function that we have is, which is billing and collections, and we're looking at someone to, a Director of Data and Back Office, sort of the Back Office operation, so that we make sure that we interface with, with Calpine S and SDGNE. So that we don't have any glitches on the backend, so we're, we're embarking on, you know, probably two or three per month, the staff buildup over the next 12 months or so. So, we'll give you reports on those as they happen, but we're, I, I can tell you the two positions that we looked, outside positions that we've looked at, we've been able to attract some very good candidates, very qualified candidates, and candidates, I think, will, will provide a valuable service to us, and, and will fit in with the group very, very well, and, and just give us that much more strength as we move forward. So, I'm happy to report that. We continue to do, we're starting to do our first long-term power solicitations, and we sort of have a working group that, part of the group does solicitations and tries to find the deals, and then we, then it moves over to the second group, which closes the, works out the deal points, does all the things necessary to conclude the discussions, and we have about a half of those, of those underway. And I might just mention parenthetically, we have, with that comes a lot of documents, as you can imagine, but you're talking about deals in hundreds of thousands of millions of dollars, and there are standard agreements that, that need to be adopted, so you don't have to admit the wheel every time you turn around, and there's a whole slew of these on the agenda. Actually, these are related to SCE primarily, but they're documents that will serve us in, as we go forward with really any deal, and Ryan's going to talk to you about that, and that will save us time down the line in terms of being able to consummate those deals. So, I think. With that. Cody, do you want to talk about the policy matrix? Evidently not. Anyway, it's there, and, and it's, are you there?
I am here.
Okay.
Now, I don't, I don't need to spend a lot of time on it. Just, we continue, and maybe especially for Director DeDina, who's new, we attach it every month to show a whole slew of policies, just housekeeping stuff that we need to kind of check off. We attach it every month to show a whole slew of policies, just housekeeping stuff that we need to kind of check off the list. Some things. Big and, um, more outward facing and some just internal, um, items. And we just want to keep track of that to show you the progress that we're making, the things that we're working on. Um, and items that are upcoming. And so we update every month and you could just see more and more of those. Boxes turning green because we are checking quite a few off the list, including, um, a few on this agenda tonight. So it's an attachment for your reference and we could leave it at that unless there's any questions.
Okay, and with that, this concludes the admin report and upcoming is the regulatory, the regulatory affairs report with Ty.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, it has been a busy, a couple of weeks, uh, on the regulatory front, as you all know. Um, I have three items that I want to report on today. Uh, we, we have supplied the best available information as part of the, um, board update, um, that are in your materials, um, at the time. But there has been, uh, there have been a couple of developments over the past, uh, two or three days that, uh, obviously did not make it into that report. So. I will give you all a verbal update about those things. Uh, I think, uh, top of the agenda is, uh, developments in SDGNE's era forecast proceeding. Uh, as a reminder, that is where, uh, SDGNE's rates for the following year are set, uh, and, uh, the. SDGNE's, uh, revenue requirement is reconciled against previous rate approvals. Uh, this is an annual proceeding that we will, um, be involved with, um, from here on out. Uh, you, you may recall that SDGNE had proposed, um, some very substantial rate reductions, uh, and we discovered, uh, that. Um, there was a methodological error, uh, contained in their proposal. Uh, we identified that, briefed it, uh, before the commission, uh, and we got a proposed decision that instructed SDGNE to correct that problem. That problem pertained to, uh, excluding, uh, departing load, uh, for next year as part of their, um. Rate formula. Uh, a couple of days ago, there was a revised proposed decision that was issued, uh, in that proceeding. Um, which removed all the language that, uh, regarding SDGNE's, um, correction of the, the error that we identified. The item was held, uh, at the Public Utilities Commission meeting this morning until January 14th. And, uh, so we'll have some time to, um. Engage with SDGNE, engage with, uh, the commission and hopefully come to, uh, a resolution. Um, in addition to that, uh, today at the Public Utilities Commission, um, there was a vote to approve, um. Uh, another revised proposed decision on SDGNE's PCI A trigger application. Uh, and we, just to, again, as a reminder for everybody, um. Uh, the PCI decision that was adopted in 2018 included a cap and trigger, um, mechanism. By which the annual amount of the PCI was capped, um, but if that, um. Amount reached certain, uh, thresholds, then the utility could file an application to collect, um, the amount, um, that had accumulated over and above the cap. Um, this year was the first year that, uh, utilities were able to file such a trigger application. Uh, SDGNE filed such an application, they're seeking to recover $8.92 million over a three-month period. Uh, and so we, we, uh, we were able to, uh. Discuss this with SDGNE, um, Cal CCA was, was part of this process as well. We entered into a stipulation. Um, regarding amortization periods that, uh, terms of that stipulation were largely adopted as part of today's proceeding. Um, I do, I did want to clarify that, uh, the 2020 and 2021 PCI vintages. Um, um, that are, uh, relevant for SDSCP were not, uh, part of that, um, balance that I just mentioned for this year, that $8.92 million balance. We got clarification on that as part of the decision, so that's helpful. Um, what we, what we have done as part of the stipulation, and this is, you know, done in a consultation with the board and the staff was. To support a removal of the cap and trigger mechanism, since it wasn't serving its intended purpose, uh, of controlling, uh, the PCI. Uh, year over year, uh, and in return, we, um. We got the, we were able to, uh, get these extended amortization periods. Um, again, the balance for this year doesn't affect the, the, the portion of the, part of the decision that, uh, regarding this year's balance. Does not affect SDSCP and we got clarification on that, but. About next year's balance, which, uh, we expect SDGNE to hit the, hit the cap. And the trigger threshold and file another PCI trigger application. We were able to obtain a 12-month amortization period for that amount. Um, so that is certainly a benefit, uh, to the program. Uh, we are anticipating that the utilities in Cal CCA will jointly develop a petition for modification to remove. The cap and trigger, um, and that will be first quarter of next year. Um, so going forward after this year, we will be. Um, contending with an uncapped PCI rate, uh, which is, um. Probably going to be a more stable situation than we have now with these mid-year trigger applications coming forward. Finally, uh, we submitted a protest to SDGNE's advice letter setting the financial security requirements. Uh, for SDSCP, this was, uh, formerly known as the CCA bond, now known as the FSR, Financial Security Requirement. Uh, and we had some issues with the way they calculated, uh, SDSCP's FSR. The, the actual amount and the calculations are confidential, so I'm not going to get into the specific details. Um, but, uh, we have had some discussions with, uh, SDGNE and with the Energy Division, and based on those discussions, we are anticipating. A corrected or revised, uh, advice letter, changing the FSR amount, uh, for SDSCP, uh, in the next few weeks, uh, from SDGNE. So those are all the items that I have, uh, today and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ty or for Bill or for Cody? Alright, um, we don't have any public comment. I don't see any hands up. And we don't have any public comment on this item, so we will receive item number six and move on to. Item number seven, which is, uh, committee reports and we have a committee. Do we have a committee report from the Community Advisory Committee and the Risk and Finance Committee? Bill?
Yeah, I'm going to be, uh, give you a quick report from the, uh, Finance and Risk Management Committee and, uh. Uh, they had a discussion, uh, from Ty, uh, on the era, which is timely and, and, and one that, uh, we've, uh, all aware of. And also on the one he just reported on the financial security requirements. Uh, uh, the era report, uh, they heard a report on that as well. Uh, they heard from Cody on the Phase One Customer Launch. Findings and lastly, and, and also on the NIM program, they, they heard from Paul Sokoe from Calpine. Uh, they, uh, approved the version, but directed the staff to look at improving the program in the near future. They liked it and they want to, they want to make, make it even better. And lastly, they talked about the Feed and Tariff program, but that's been, uh, pulled from the agenda. So, that's their report.
Well, the Feed and Tariff item, will that go back to Risk and Finance, uh, before it comes back to the board? With any changes that are made?
Uh, I don't know. I, I wasn't at the, at the meeting. Sebastian, were they requested to come back?
No, Chair, um, the, the reason why, uh, we recommended pulling it from the agenda today was. A, uh, noticing error that was made on the agenda. Uh, the item itself, everything is, is ready. We just wanted to, or on the side of caution. Uh, per the Brown Act, uh, that the specific, uh, language was not on the agenda for today. So the idea is to bring it back next month. With correct the language, uh, to ensure that we're complying with the product.
Sounds good. Alright, thank you. Uh, Bill, so are you going to give the update, the update for Community Advisory Committee or is, um. Eddie here or somebody from Community Advisory Committee?
Is Eddie here?
Um, I'm texting him right now and he's having some technical difficulties. Um.
We can always, uh, come back to this item or if, um, somebody else, um. Has the ability to give his update.
I, I do see, uh, the Vice Chair of the CAC in attendance.
Is that Tara?
Yeah.
If she, if she's, uh, prepared and she wants to give an update for the committee, that would be fine.
Um. Let's see. Okay, Tara, I'm gonna go ahead and let you speak.
Hi. I am not prepared, but I am happy to give a very short update. Uh, the one action item we had during our meeting. Was regarding the Feed and Tariff program that you guys will be discussing later today. IBW had submitted suggestions for added, um, worker language. That we discussed, we would create a subcommittee to discuss adding equity and worker language, and then we would, as a committee. Bring that back to you, but in the interim, we approved the letter as is to keep things moving. Um. Uh, it sounds like the, the Feed and Tariff, that was the item that was moved at the beginning of the meeting. Um, but that is the quick update on our end.
Awesome. Thank you, Tara. Yeah, so we moved that to a future, um, agenda, so we'll, we'll discuss that again. Uh, so, so I guess it sounds like it's going to be a several-step process. We'll, we'll, uh, pass, uh, we'll, we'll consider something in the future and then. Probably have another go at it, um, again, in the future as well. So, thank you. If there's nothing else to report. Is that it?
That.
Alright, well, let's, um, let's move to number, uh, let's move to, uh, item eight, which is the Treasurer's Report Presentation of First Quarter of FYI. 2021 Financial Resort, uh, Results.
Yeah, Mike Maher is here today if he wants to make a report. Otherwise, I think, uh, uh, we could probably just tell you that, uh. We're still working on formatting and, and what numbers to present, how to present them. Uh, our plan is to have monthly financial reports that. That, uh, go to and are discussed at the, uh, Finance and Risk Management Committee every month. Then they would come to you all, uh, sort of as an information item, you know, on consent that can be, you could, we, you can pull it if you want to. Uh, with the understanding that if the staff or the committee wants to make note of anything that's, uh. Good, bad, or out of the ordinary in the report, we will draw your attention to it, so you don't have to scour the report to find out what it really says. Uh, and then either quarterly or semi-annually, we will do, uh, a, a presentation at the board to give you an idea where we are on the budget and other things. Uh, and, uh, so we're still, uh, since there's no money coming in, it's all going out. It's a pretty simple report, so. We haven't, uh, proposed to take your time with that other than to get you familiar with seeing the report that it comes and we'll probably start that, uh. Uh, after we do the, uh, pro forma, uh. Work that PEA is going to do for us and that'll help set the stage for being able to compare, uh, where we are on all those items. So. And unless, uh, oh, and he's also undertaken a study to, we, we're finding that a lot of transactions that we have to do require deposits and things like that. And so. That's chunks of money that get tied up. And so, uh, since we, we are on the, the limited part of our borrowing. Uh, until we step up later on in, in, uh, February or, or January or February or March. He's, he's taking a look to make sure our cash flow is, is okay. We've got enough money to do that. So we've got someone looking over to make sure that we don't, uh. Get surprised by not having an obligation and not being able to fund it or having to run around to find funding for it. So. So you're in good hands with, uh, the, the group that's, um, uh, that, that's working on that and making sure that we're okay. So. Unless he has anything to add, I don't know that there's anything we need to highlight.
Um, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, sure. We're just, just, uh, I mean, Bill hit the high points there. You know, of course, right now. Money's going out and the real activity is going to pick up, uh, in, in the spring and early summer, so. We'll have more robust financial statements at that point. Um, uh, in the packet. We did include the financial statements for the first quarter and also the budget comparison results, if you wanted to take a look, but again, there's not a whole lot of activity at this point. Um, and just something to put on your radar after we set the rates in January and get a little more. Uh, detailed information on cost side of things, um, as well as revenue side of things. We will likely be presenting a revised budget, an amended budget at that time, or shortly after, I should say. Um, so that'll be something we'll be discussing in January, February also. So. When we start to provide those reports monthly, um, it'll be in that new format as well.
Good, good, good. Yeah, no, that sounds good. Um, Bill, that also sounds good in how you're going to proceed in terms of risk and finance and then, um, consent item. Um, in the future, um, that, that, that all sounds good. Um, anybody, anybody have any questions for Bill or for Michael? And Megan, we don't have any, uh, public comment on this item, right?
No public comments.
Alright, thank you, Michael. Thank you for, uh, for, um, for, for looking at the books and thank you for tuning in today and staying, um, for this, this item. Alright, let's move on to item number nine, approval of a net energy metering program.
I believe that's Sebastian's item.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and, uh, yes, Bill, uh, thank you, Chair and members of the board. Um, before you is, um, as was mentioned, the approval of a NIM program. Um, we have worked with Paul Sokoe, who is in attendance today. He is our technical expert from Calpine in developing this program. Uh, we have, uh, taken it to the Community Advisory Committee as well as the Finance and Risk Management Committee for, for input and, and feedback. Um. What you have before you is an initial program, um, with the idea, uh, as, uh, direction was given to us by the FRMC to. Improve it and make it more accessible to, uh, our communities of concern. We are, in the sub-report, you can find that we are suggesting, uh, or we are moving, um. All NIM customers that get transferred over to us from STGNE, uh, to start being mass enrolled in Phase Three. Um, the majority of NIM customers are residential, um, and this just allows that. Uh, and Paul, please chime in on this. Um, this allows that, uh, the exchange period with STGNE happens, uh, more efficiently and, and better. Uh, we're approving a program now because we are in the process of, uh, completing. Our contact center information and our website. We want to make sure we have a program in place, um, from the Gecko. As well as a program that none of them customers as part of Phase One and Phase Two, uh, can enroll on. In addition, uh, as you can see here, as part of the recommendation, and excuse me if you hear, uh, a siren in the background. We are waiting, uh, until we have more rate information, um, which will come in January to approve the net surplus compensation. That's the dollar amount that our customers will get paid. Um, and, and so. Basically, uh, this is the skeleton of the program, uh, with then plugging in that number that will be brought before you, uh, in, in January. Um, we, at least I'm thinking of ideas to, um, uh, innovative programs to, uh. Make sure that our communities of concern, um, get access to, to them and, and, uh, are prioritized. Aside from this, we have also, um, uh, I think Ty mentioned this last month. Uh, we have, uh, we're now participating in the NIM 3.0 proceeding at the PUC. I believe as of last week, we are the first CCA to be participating in this proceeding, so we are getting in the fight early, uh, to make sure that. We, uh, are influential in what that proceeding will look like and how it'll impact the energy meeting in the future. I'll pass right there and see if Paul, if you want to, uh, fill in anything that, that I may have missed. If not, you can take any question.
Yeah, uh, no, Sebastian, I think you did, uh, very well on that. I just wanted to make sure that, um, uh, it was clear that we're, uh, um. Want, or we're presenting this policy so that, uh, even though, uh, the majority of NIM customers are not being enrolled until 2022. There inevitably, there will be some customers in Phase One or Phase Two that will change to them in the meantime. Um, and not, you know, uh, they're already active customers, but they changed to them because they install, uh, new solar and we need a program to. and we need a program to serve them under. Additionally, you know, this, this program is going to be very visible. And so customers who, even though, even though they're not being phased in, may call and just get some information. And that's, that's the point with the, the contact center and making sure that we have information for them. And the last thing, just wanted to note, there, there are, I think, proceedings for NEM Three is, are starting the spring of next year. We'll continue to monitor that and we'll work with staff, Calpine, we'll, we'll work with staff to make sure that their program, SECPs program will fit within whatever parameters or constraints of, of NEM Three. But thank you.
Great. All right. So we, we plan on bringing this item back. At the same time that we're discussing rates, we'll be discussing rates for NEM customers.
That's correct.
That's correct. All right. And then so this out of curiosity, so if, if you're a NEM, how, how many NEM customer, NEM customers are there for SDGNE? I mean, how many within our, within the, the territory are there?
Um, I'll have Paul answer that question.
There are thousands or?
Paul, do you have that number off, off the top of your head?
Ballpark is good.
Not, I, I could, I could look for it, but I think Chair Moscow, it's in the tens of thousands.
All right. So when, when a, when a, when a person becomes a NEM customer and they're, and they're relying less on the grid, what is the kind of mechanism like we're talking about with PCIA? This kind of departing load, what's the mechanism for the NEM customer? Is that the rate? Is that kind of, how are they paying? That kind of departing load situation that like an, like a direct access customer would pay or CTE would pay? How does that pay, get paid?
Yeah, so, so PCI would be assessed on the net generation, oh, sorry, the net consumption that they have for that particular billing period. So if they, if, if the home or business consumes, say, 200 kilowatt hours and they generated 100 kilowatt hours, PCI would be assessed on just the net of 100 that they consume from the grid.
All right, I was just wondering, because like if, if I'm a NEM customer at STGNE, right? They're, they're not pay, are they, is there some way right now that STGNE is able to recover in that same sense that they recover from us, from a departing load for a CTE through the PCI? Is there some way that they recover for, for the NEM customers? I was, I just find that interesting because then the NEM customers come over to us and, and then they're in recover through a PCI through us. So it's just there, I guess, well, we can further that conversation if I'm not making sense. But I, I, I just found it interesting if, if the NEM customers come over and there are tens of thousands and they come over to us, that then pushes up our PCI and they're, and.
Yeah. Um, I, I think those are great questions, Chair. Paul, I don't know if, if you can chime in on that. If not, we're, we're happy to dig a little bit deeper into that.
I would assume the NEM customer, when coming over, is not like a regular customer that comes over. PCI is not calculated the same for each customer. And that, that, that rate also must, how much, how much they're getting paid for the energy they put back in the grid must also be representative of, of, of that cost as well. Anyways, that's.
Yeah, so, so Chair, the, the PCI rate is, would generally be the same for everyone, depending on the, the vintage or when they departed from SDGNE. So regardless of whether or not it, they are a NEM customer or a regular customer, the rate at which they pay PCI would be the same. Now, I can't speak on the calculation of how SDGNE would do that. That's, you know, that's probably, it's a question better for, for SDGNE. But there's, there would be no difference to the customer of, yeah, there would be no difference to the customer.
Got it. All right.
And then, so just to answer your question, there are approximately eight, 80,000 NEM customers, both residential and commercial in the territory.
Wow. All right. So that's gotta be one of the highest penetration of solar and NEM customers and of any IOU. That's pretty high.
Yes, we compared it to a similarly sized community choice aggregation program to the north of us and it's almost double.
All right. All right. Anybody have any questions or comments on this item? Any board members? All right. I don't see any hands going up. Megan, do we have a public, I see, I think we have one public comment on this item.
We do. We have one public comment from Jason Anderson. Clean Tech San Diego would like to register its support for Agenda Item Nine. And that concludes the public comment for Agenda Item Nine.
All right. If there are no other comments or questions on this item, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Baber moves.
And I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Board Member Baber and a second by Board Member Montgomery Stapp.
Board Member Dedina, how do you vote?
You know, I.
Board Member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote? Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
All right. So item number 10 was pulled and moved to a future agenda, agenda. So we won't go to that one. We'll go to item number 11, which is the approval of power purchase agreement with Southern California Edison, approval of master power purchase and sale agreements and lockbox agreements. This is something that Bill Carnahan was just talking about and I will turn it over to, is this general counsel?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, good evening, Chair, Board of Directors. I'm just going to give a very brief presentation on energy contracting that we gave at the Risk Management Committee. And then I'll move into the actual items themselves. I just thought it'd be proved to just give you some background on what's before you tonight. Next slide, please. Um, you know, 70, 80% of what we'll be doing here in the next couple of months will be buying power, right? We'll be buying energy, buying room power and buying resource adequacy. Slide, please. And that's going to come in a couple of different forms. One's going to be through a master purchase and sale agreement process and the other is going to come through your long-term power purchase agreement. What's before you tonight is a joint agreement. One is an Edison and the other is a Western Systems Power Pool Master Agreement. And what those essentially, well, I'll get to that in a second. And, and then you're going to also buy off these master agreements through what's called a confirmation agreement. Your power purchase agreements will be done on a long-term basis. And you'll be, will be entering into quite a few agreements with multiple counterparties as well as entering the lockbox agreements as well. So the master agreement process is, the industry uses one of two templates that have been established by trade organizations to make it easier to facilitate transactions and not have everyone recreate. Sorry, I'm getting a lot of background. Um, thank you. So the EEI and WSPP are two trade associations that have developed a 40, 50-page template that we can use with counterparties and not have to draft our own contracts. That master agreement is going to control all the terms and conditions of the agreement. Once the SDCP goes out to a competitive solicitation, issues an RFO, we will then execute an individual confirmation agreement under the master agreement that will dictate the price, resource, counterparty, and some of the specific terms and market, market terms of that transaction on an individual basis that will generally be delegated to the chief executive officer to sign. If it exceeds those delegations based on term, which is three years, notional amount or notional value of the contract or the, the amount of power that you're buying, then that will be approved by the board. Your long-term power purchase agreements, the ones that are 10 years or more that we're negotiating now with counterparties that you've seen in the ad hoc subcommittee and some of the discussions that have takes place in the Risk Management Committee for RPS, those are all going to be done through power purchase agreements, generally 100, 150-page contracts that are going to go into a lot of greater detail. Next slide, please. So under your master purchase and sale agreement, we're going and confirmation will be negotiating price, the term, the product, where we're going to have the delivery point, payment, credit and collateral terms with the default liability, identity, all the, the great stuff that lawyers do. Glenn Price and I, my partner, have been negotiating these agreements for you over the past couple of months. We anticipate a whole lot of contracts to be negotiated in the next couple of months. The long-term power purchase agreement is going to deal with the same terms and conditions, but it's going to look at, you know, the construction of the facility, commercial operation milestones, development and performance securities. What happens if construction is delayed? What happens if the commercial operation date of the generated facility is not met? What kind of damages do they pay? Do they pay them daily? Do they pay them based on megawatt hours? It also will contain certain performance guarantees. So for instance, if the, if the generating facility drops down below, you know, 90 or 95% of, of what's guaranteed in the contract, there will be damages or payments associated by the seller with that. What happens if the CAISO calls for a curtailment of the facility such that has to be held back? And we don't have enough product? Who replaces that product? What if the buyer calls for that curtailment? So there's a lot of variables in those contracts that are negotiated back and forth between the buyer and seller. So in, in a nutshell, the, the EEI and WSPP, we're going to be focused on sort of your short-term contracts. You know, year and a half, 19 months, brown power, green power, resource adequacy, and the PPA process is going to be for your long-term. Next slide, please. The process that we're embarking upon now is to get enabled with counterparties over the next couple of months. And what that essentially means is we send over the master agreements to the, the credit and business units. They, we sign a non-disclosure agreement, they review SDCP financials. We, we look at their financials and the history of, of their company. We then trade some edits back and forth under either one of the master agreements and then get those ready for signature and get those in place. And those are essentially evergreen agreements now that the parties can transact under. And then when an RFO is issued by San Diego Community Power to those counterparties, they will solicit bids with their prices and, and their products. And that, that will go through a confidential selection process and ultimately awarded to the lowest, lowest price. And, and, and that can be done through the RFO. We can also execute contracts bilaterally. So if there's a, a need to fill a particular product in a month where SDCP might be short, we could approach a broker. We could buy from a vendor that has that product for sale. And so there will be some bilateral contracts filling in those increments. What we have before you tonight for the master agreement, and I'll get to the agenda in just a second, is what, bringing a template before you of the preferred contract that we recommend to our clients, that most of the CCAs use, that most of the big counterparties like Nextera, BP, Shell North America, Direct Energy, Eight Minute Energy, that they have seen out of the CCA communities and are comfortable with, that we think we can get enabled with them rather quickly. So what we're bringing for you tonight are templates that we would ask the board to adopt via resolution and delegate that authority to the chief executive officer to delegate, to execute when we complete those master agreement negotiations through the enabling process. I also just want to touch upon the last part of this slide, which is confidentiality. Lot of the agreements contain market-sensitive information such as price, resource, et cetera. The PUC does have rules on confidentiality. And so these terms and conditions are not subject or exempt from disclosure under the Public Records Act. So to the extent there is a request for these, these agreements, we would redact out those market-sensitive portions of the contract, publicly disclose the rest of the agreement with a, you know, with whatever notices needed under, under the Public Records Act. So before you tonight is a resolution to adopt the EEI and Western Systems Power Pool Master Purchase Agreements. The second part of that resolution, 202011, is to adopt also the lockbox agreements. These are draft lockbox agreements that we have negotiated with River City Bank. One is a deposit account control agreement, another is a security agreement, and the third is an intercreditor and agency collateral agreement. They've not been finalized in terms of execution. They have been finalized in terms of negotiation. And so in lieu of SDCP posting any sort of collateral with a counterparty on those master agreements, most of them are taking this lockbox arrangement. And what that essentially means is it's a secured arrangement with River City Bank, who acts as a collateral agent in control of the revenues that come into your account. So rather than SDCP paying the, the seller directly and in lieu of posting collateral, the sellers will take a lockbox arrangement where the revenues stay with the bank. The bank acts as an agent who then distributes those revenues out to the counterparties based on priorities. So the security agreement essentially contains a waterfall of priorities that when the revenues come in, distribution first goes to the counterparty off the top, then goes to the debt financing on the loan. The third is to any bank fees and then the fourth priority would go back to SDCP to essentially pay its bills. And so what those three agreements do is maintain the, outline what those priorities are, designate the bank as the collateral agent to distribute those priorities and act on behalf of your secured creditors, i.e. the counterparties, and then distribute those revenues in lieu of posting collateral. So as part of that resolution, we've collapsed it into approval of the master agreement and delegation of authority as well as approve the lockbox agreements to form and delegate that authority to the CEO. We will execute those lockbox agreements around the time we execute the master agreement and the confirmation. So in the next several weeks to a month, as well as execute them with River City Bank.
Ryan, how often is it, how, how usual is it that we see these kind of collaterals that would be requested?
Um, on the master, on just the regular day-to-day transactions that we'll be doing, there isn't a lot of request for collateral. There are some companies, you know, I have had experience where like Shell, for instance, has asked for a lot of financial information or some companies will come back and ask for them from time to time. Most of the industry is accustomed to the CCA world at this point, has seen how successful it is, has seen the financials play out accordingly. Do not ask for collateral. Where you see those requests usually made are on your long-term power purchase agreements, where you're entering into a 10-year deal. The deals are bigger. And there's, there's a lot more risk associated with the contract.
Thank you.
So I wanted to set all that up. I know the, the recommended action, number one, is the SCE agreement, but this presentation sort of sets that up. We are in the process of negotiating with Southern California Edison. Despite all what I just said about the master agreement process, Edison and all the investor-owned utilities have their own master agreement that's based on EEI. You, if you edit it, it tends to go over into their credit department for a couple of months. I generally recommend that clients don't edit their agreements too heavily because where we have good exchange with the other counterparties like Shell and Nextera and BP, that's a more rigid process. So in order to effectuate this, we do have delegated authorities in place under the risk management policy to Bill. Those are largely the confirmation agreements, though. Edison pointed out that we did not have delegated authority for its master agreement because it is evergreen. master agreement because it is evergreen. So we're asking you tonight to adopt it to form, delegate it to bill for execution, as well as any other related documents. And we will be signing that deal tomorrow with all of the, in fact, they've been emailing me throughout our our meeting tonight for some information. So I apologize for the long presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Now, this was a good presentation, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan? Or comments?
Ryan, it's Bill. What did you just say at the end that the deal with Southern California Edison is evergreen? What did you mean by that?
Once we execute the master agreement, it will govern all subsequent transactions for renewable energy. So we do not have to go through this two, three month credit financial process with them. We can execute confirmations under that master and participate in their RFOs and do so more expeditiously. You have to negotiate this large master contract and then go through the price negotiations. It's a two, two.
And if a future board in two or four years wanted to change that, would they ever have that opportunity?
Yes, we could bring our own master agreements back to you. And then the IOUs do update their agreements from time to time, which would cause us to re adopt those contracts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Cameron, can I make a quick comment?
Sure. Bill?
I would say this is is really kind of a milestone event here, because when we start talking about agreements like this, which are very common in the industry, and it's the only way, quite frankly, that business gets done. You'd spend all your time negotiating individual contracts, you'd never get any, any, any deals made. And so we have a team on the ground that's just generating the deals and along with the Ryan negotiating the deals. And they all have these standard agreements so that you, you know, you don't have to reinvent the wheel every time you do a deal. That's what the master agreements are about. And so this really says that we are serious and we are in the business. And we're going to be handling multiple deals. And I think you'll be surprised that, you know, all that happens now, because this is significant event, I think. Now, we have bought before under RA and whatnot. This is really power to the people, if you if you think about it, those really, this is really going to keep the lights on.
Right. Right, right, right. Yeah, otherwise, Ryan would be insanely busy, well, even more insanely busy than he is without a master contract.
Yes. Two or three or four attorneys that potent that work on these were fortunate enough. Glenn and I handle the bulk of it. If you ever have any questions about the process or the pricing, you know, some of these deals just on, you know, short term, 19 month, we're talking, you know, 30, 40, $50 million deals right out of the gate. And if you ever want an update on that process, we we can always discuss the the pricing publicly, but we can certainly send you a confidential memo about the pricing so you can see how these transactions are rolling out.
And that's a, that's a good point. And 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 also the fact that he went up to 50 million, actually, Bill actually has authority to approve up to 50 million. So a lot of those transactions you would not see unless, of course, you've you work with Ryan to see him. All right, any any other questions for Ryan or or Bill? All right, not seeing any hands raised or anybody shouting out. Megan, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
All right. Do we have a a motion from my fellow?
So move. DeDina.
Have a second on this?
Big Serge, move the resolutions.
Serge moved it, and then do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second by Board Member DeDina. And also, I'm sorry, a a motion by Board Member DeDina and a second by Vice Chair Padilla.
Board Member DeDina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Board Member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
All right, great. So we have our master power purchase agreement now. All right, let's move on to number 12, which is appointment of board members to the Finance and Risk Management Committee for the 2021 calendar year. Do we have nominations or do we want to? I think La Mesa Imperial Beach fulfilled that role before.
Yes, I I will volunteer La Mesa, but that's a very simple thing on my part, because when I say volunteer, it's really Greg Hermor, our city manager, who's my alternate, who goes to all these meetings and does all the number crunching. So under our system, I have to volunteer so I can allow him to do it.
And Greg has been awesome. And so happy that he would stay on, especially since he's running the entire city of La Mesa and also doing our our risk and finance. So that's great.
But he's the man I trust with the numbers, so I'm glad he's there.
Good. Good. Did Imperial Beach want to continue on as our representative? I think so our our bylaws are, Ryan, our bylaws are flexible enough for an alternate to go to the committee or the primary, right?
Yes.
So in the spirit of filling Mark West's giant shoes, I have no problem. I, you know, unless somebody else really wants to sit on the committee.
All right, do we have a motion?
Well, I'll move it.
I'll move it. All right, so you're going to move Baber Imperial Beach and
and La Mesa.
La Mesa on the Risk and Finance Committee, and I'll second that.
Board Member DeDina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Board Member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
All right, we've come to almost our end of our agenda. Well, the end of our agenda, but the almost the end of the meeting. Any directors want to make comments?
I only want to say, welcome aboard, Serge. We're glad to have you.
Thanks, it's a pleasure to be here. I appreciate supporting everybody. Imperial Beach is obviously committed to this process and committed to this organization. So it's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you, and thank you for saying that. All right, any any reports by our CEO or COO or our General Counsel?
I'm here.
No, I I would just welcome Director DeDina. If you have any questions, I'm happy to to reach out and spend some time with you or, you know, get to know you anything I can do to 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 support you at San Diego Community Power.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
All right, well, so we are at the end of our agenda, end of our meeting. You guys have a happy holidays and then we will see each other in January in the new year.
Bye bye, happy holidays. Thanks, happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks.